St. Joseph Parish of Balmouth provides a place to worship God and refresh your spirit with others. Here are some of our upcoming events.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Town of Balmouth Select Board meeting on Monday, January 23rd, at 6:30 PM. Our Chair, Dr. Nancy Taylor, is not with us this evening. We hope that she will call in, so I will be acting as Chair this evening.
Madam Chair, I just got a text from Ms. Taylor. She will not be able to join us.
Okay. Bummer.
You're on.
No pressure. All right. If you'll all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'd like to ask everyone to make sure that you silence your cellphones and notify the Chair if you're making a video or audio recording of this open session meeting. Okay. Next, we will move on to recognition. Do we have any recognition from board members?
I'd like to recognize Town Engineer Jim McLaughlin, Peter McConity, and Stephen Catterett for their recent success in securing a grant for complete streets for the safe routes to school. It was like $156,000.
Yep.
So that's excellent work. I appreciate that.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other recognition? All right. We'll move on to announcements. I know we have an announcement about Woodneck Beach, so we'll start with that one. Welcome, Mark.
Good evening. Mark Haspizik, Conservation Land Manager and MES Technician. So I'm just giving a brief report on Woodneck Beach. First week of January, we had a lot of severe storms, a lot of, well, I wouldn't say severe storms, a lot of westerly winds that caused a lot of erosion over on Woodneck Beach. I don't know if any of you have been over there, but when we went out, there was about four to, four to 10 feet of dune that we lost. And in some areas, you could see, like, right over to the parking lot, so it was really getting bad. The other component that was interesting was there was probably two feet that we lost height, you know, because the stakes that were there before, you could see it was pale and now they're, well, they're bleached there. So there were, so the result was they exposed a lot of rusty metal stakes, wooden stakes that were broken off, old wire from snow fencing. So, you know, part of the reason is a hazard. So thanks to DPW, we asked if they would come out, look at it, and went out with Mike Souza on, I think it was the 9th, which was a Tuesday, and, you know, showed them the situation. He got the Bobcat out there, they pulled out all the stakes, they scraped all the sand that was, that had come from the storms on the parking lot, put it in piles. And then the idea was to try to get some reinforcement in there before we had any other storms coming up, and we did. But luckily, they managed to, that was the 13th on Friday, they brought out over 750 cubic yards of sand from the pit, sort of re-fortifying the dunes from what was lost because, you know, if we had more, you know, erosion, then it might even end up in the parking lot. So right now, it's still stable. We're going to have some high, high tides in the next few days, and hopefully, you know, it'll hold. We're currently working with Mary Kay Fox and the Sippewist Association to put in some more fortitude with sand fencing, not just the regular slats, but something that's a little stronger. And that's going to be, you know, basically from the parking lot south to where the town property ends. The area north, we're going to be waiting on that because, you know, that's where the piping plovers have tried to nest, and we have to work with the Heritage, Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program on that. But that's where it stands right now, and again, I'd really like to thank DPW for getting out there so quickly, and we've had a good, a lot of good responses from the public.
Great. Thank you, Mark.
Any questions?
Yeah, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
A number of years ago, I guess it's the Jappicoy Beach Association that owned the private property just south, well, south of Jappicoy Beach, you know, actually explored the option of pumping sand from out in Buzzers Bay, I guess it's silted in from the canal currents, and restoring their beach. And I just wondered whether that might be an option that the town needs to look at in the future, because they were able to apparently find suitable sand that was, you know, whatever, half a mile off the beach, that could be pumped back onto the beach. Is that something we should be looking at?
Um, yeah, we could look into it. The problem is, is if I recall correctly, one of the reasons why this hasn't been done is because, I think, a lot of coastal geologists have said, basically, that based on the prevailing currents and the conditions, that if you put a lot of sand on that beach, you know, most of it's probably going to end up in the salt marsh area and, you know, or get moved out. So that's, you know, that's, this is something that we have to look into, and at least, you know, maybe something in between, getting some beach nourishment out there would be a better solution, so. All right.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other announcements? Nope. Hearing none. Move on to public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. Since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board may not participate in discussion of the topic. It is not appropriate to use a public comment period to comment on any person's reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, disciplinary matters, or civil or criminal charges. Comments about job performance and decisions made are permissible. Do we have anyone here for public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to the Town Manager's preliminary report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If it is agreeable, I know that the Health Agent is here for a brief update, and he has another meeting, so perhaps we could take him first, and then I'll proceed to my report.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that's a, some move. Do we have a, have a motion and a second?
You have one. Well, you said so.
Take it out. I made a motion to take it out of order.
Second, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Scott.
Got to find the password. It's written on it. It's written on it, too. I know it is.
Right in the top. Balmouth 01.
Oh, there we go. I should have seen this. They only come over here every two weeks, right? Oh, you want, you want lowercase. Tick, 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 tick. Oh, the pressure. Try them both. Hold on, I'll get it. I got it now, Pete, I think.
My sympathy. You're in good company.
Yes. Oh, no. Look at this. Wants me to reset the password to something else.
Oh, yes. I got caught with that this afternoon. Yeah, there you go. Our town.
Capital F, if you were.
Yes, I got it in there. I. Mr. McConity. You got the magic touch. Short, fat fingers did not work today. All right.
Could be an option in the future.
Okay, so.
I wanted to do it on 28.
Yeah. So COVID-19 update, we haven't done one in a while, so I give you an update. The first slide is the number of cases. So it's 6,136, but that's not the actual number of cases, and it hasn't been for a long time because home kits are not, the home test kits aren't showing up in the data. So take this with a grain of salt. When this goes up, then you know the cases are going up. There's some multiplier, three, five, that is much higher than what the actual case counts. But, you know, looking at it week to week, it tells you, if you got a lot of PCR, you can, you can bet that you've got plenty of home tests. So we had 44 in the past week. We're averaged about 50. Our incidence rate was 20.2, again, only based on PCR and a positivity of 12.67. But I really want to focus on the next slide, which is what the CDC is using, and it takes it by county, and it uses hospitalizations, because hospitalizations is always a better indicator, especially with home tests, of the burden of the disease. And it uses total number of cases, either more or less than 200 per 100,000 over the past seven days in the county. And then it applies admissions of hospitals, of hospital, admissions per 100,000 population and percent of beds being used up. Generally, since they've started this, we've been on the low, the high end of low to the low end of medium, and that's probably been our typical weeks. And then more recently, we had a couple of weeks where the county was high. Right now, we're in the sort of the median, medium to high medium, so to speak. So we're in the, we're definitely in the, well into the medium for this. Trending a little bit lower. And so, you know, it hasn't been where it's gone off the hook, and this is where I really want to show you. It's a busy chart, but I apologize. But if you look at the three charts on the right, that's all the hospitalizations since the beginning of the pandemic. So not surprisingly, we had the Delta one, it was our first one, that was, we're January of '21, I'm circulating it here, and another one on January of '22. The Delta one, a lot less cases, but those were generally much more severe cases, so you have a high hospitalization rate relative to the amount of cases. Omicron, you just had a boatload of cases. So this time last year, we just had so much COVID. If you look at the MWRA, the wastewater in Boston, the chart that they show you every week, it comes from someplace way off the chart down around that time last year. Now you look at this year, the far right, that little blip, that's this year. So we, looks like there's definitely a trend that January is going to be our worst month for COVID. But that, that blip that we have this year, a bit of an increase this year, is nowhere compares to those other two. So hospitalizations is the best way to look at it. And you can see that they pretty much all track the same way, that hospitalizations, the amount of COVID that happens is going to be highest coming in out of the holidays. This is cold and flu season, so let's call it cold, flu, and COVID season, because I can, I'd be willing to bet that 20, you know, January 1st to '24, if I'm standing in front of you, it's going to have another blip. Coming off the holidays, everybody mixes and sees people they haven't seen in months, years, or decades. People get together, you're inside, lots going on. So that first week of January, you know, into the second, third week of January is probably going to be our highest, and it's probably our highest for the flu, and it's generally probably our highest for the cold. And so that's kind of where we are. But it's not a bump where we saw, like, with last year with the Omicron, it was just such, Omicron, the original version, you know, was, was about the same sort of potency as now, and look how much more cases we had. And you can also see in the bottom, you see with deaths, you see that it's essentially been flat since that Delta surge that we had in January of '21. You see it going up a little bit, and, you know, but only by, by a small amount. And one of the reasons maybe is because if you look at our vaccination rates, and it's probably pretty typical of a lot of vaccination rates, don't get too worked up on the numbers. I don't think we've had 30, 30,000 out of our 32,000 people get our first dose. It's, this is what the state provides me. I think some of those may belong a percent or two over to the boosters. Somebody might come in and tell the person given the shot that they, this is their first one, and they don't remember. So, but anyway, what I really want you to look at is we really had a good uptake in our, in our primary series, which would be the 92 and 82%, so somewhere in there. And it dropped off to 18,000, or 56% of the population got their first booster, and the second booster drops to 31. So we have about a third of the people in town with their second booster. Going back up to that slide up here, that's probably, because the Omicron since we've got has pretty much been the same, might be the reason why explaining that slight increase is because the boosters, your, your first series is now a year and a half old, going on two years. So if you haven't been back for two years, that, that vaccine's probably waning. So I think if you look at the data, you say, well, you know, yeah, we've had a bit of an increase in hospitalizations. Part of that is, might be because of our, some, our population might be a little, you know, 64% of those over 75, according to the state, have gotten the second booster. That's not, that's not as high as I would have thought. The uptake is a little bit lower. Look how high it was originally, greater than 95% got their first series. So I would recommend that if you're in that group or immunocompromised or elderly, that you'd consider getting their boosters. They are readily available. It's available to anybody five years and older, if it's been at least two months since your last dose. And for children, six, six months to four years, have completed the Moderna primary series, and if it's been at least two months, they can get a booster as well. You go on that, I think I put it on the previous slide, down the bottom, it's vaxfinder.mass.gov, and there's plenty of open slots. We usually check it every week, and there's, there's a fair amount of booster around. As far as this colorful chart here is, shows you the new, the variants as they move. So back in, you know, December 3rd of '22, you had very little bit of the purple, which is the XBB, and look at it by now, it's already about, what, about 85% or so. So it takes about four to six weeks for the new variants to take over, once they get a dominant one. Sometimes it'll linger with a bunch of different variants, like we saw maybe November around Thanksgiving, and now it's pretty much XBB is the new variant. So they're all pretty much the same, all those different Omicrons. You just don't want it to go back to like a Delta with a lower respiratory and some of that real sort of severity that you saw in '21. So, yeah.
Is the bivalent?
Bivalent. Yep.
Is that protecting us from the last?
All the Omicrons, yeah. So it's got the Omicron and the original COVID in it. So bivalent means it's got the Omicron, general Omicron, and it seems to be working as well with all of them. I don't have anything to say that the XBB is going to be any better or worse than the BA5. Okay. I think as these get, if these do send, tend to show stronger, I would probably say it might have a lot more to do with the, the time interval, if you haven't gotten your second booster, if you haven't gotten your first booster, and you're in that group where you're still relying on a two-year, or three-year, or a four-year-old vaccine. And then as far as what are you doing? Well, I'm still doing the bi-weekly FCTV updates. We did get offered by, local boards of health were offered by the state to get test kits, and we've been getting, we've had several thousand, and we've been getting rid of them through the service center, senior center, Town Hall's had some, Balmouth Housing Authority and some other places. And when the state gives me a nice thing, hey, do you want free home tests? We say sure. So I just got a delivery Friday, and so I got several thousand at the office to get it to distribute, and we'll, we'll get them out this week. And then, so if you go to the senior center, the service center, we'll have some here at Town Hall, there's some other places, we'll make them available. And when they come up, we take them. You know, sometimes they don't have a lot of code left, so I have to be careful if there's not a lot of shelf life left. I don't want to get stuck with a bunch of outdated ones. So I look at what the, what the use-by date is and, you know, order appropriately. You know, of course, we still get occasional questions, and we still go on Maven every day to make sure and look at the cases and so forth. But, you know, again, Maven's only going to show the PCR positives, not going to show us everybody's home tests, so. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Scott.
You're welcome.
And thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome. Just going to close out for you guys. Good luck to the next person.
To the Town Managers of their report.
Sure. So the next item on the Select Board's agenda tonight is to vote seasonal wage rates for fiscal year '24. I will be seeking the Board's approval to increase seasonal wage rates for the positions listed in your packet by 15%. There are actually two categories. The town, the elections positions are going up by slightly less than that, and we can go over that in detail when we get to this item. But the, the main message here is that what, the way that we have budgeted, been budgeting these positions in prior years is we've been very optimistic about filling all of the positions that we hope to fill for the number of weeks that we want, and we have not come anywhere near filling all of those hours in any of the past several years. So what we're looking at this year, the Board will recall, we did have a significant increase in the rates last year as well, and I'm recommending a 15% increase this year, but not looking to substantially increase any of the department budgets, because realistically, we, we're, we're still not going to be able to fill all of the positions and all of the weeks for the season that we would like. So I believe that this proposal represents sort of a right sizing of these budgets, and, you know, hopefully, we will be able to hire more with this wage rate increase. But even if we do very well with hiring, given the dynamics that all employers in the region are seeing, you know, we still don't expect to fill all of those hours, so we can afford this increase without a budget increase.
How many seasonal workers are there that will be getting this kind of increase?
I think we'll discuss that when we actually get to that item.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, we are.
The next item you're, on your agenda is to continue the conversation with respect to an override for fire staffing. We do not need a vote tonight, and, you know, certainly given the Chair's absence, the Board probably does not want to vote a decision tonight, but we will be looking for a vote at the meeting on January 30th. And just as a reminder for the public, at a workshop meeting on January 7th, I presented two potential override scenarios to hire 14 additional firefighters that are needed to staff six fire stations when the Hatchville Station comes online. The two options I presented are an override of 1.5 million or 950,000, and the 1.5 represents the full cost of wages and benefits for those 14 firefighters, and 950 obviously is less than that. Both of those options will allow us to hire the 14 firefighters. The larger override provides more flexibility to address other department needs within the levy limit in future years, but it comes with a larger tax impact. In your packet, we have included information requested at the January 7th workshop, showing comparisons of average tax bill to other Cape Cod communities, and an overview of tax deferral and exemption options as context for the Board's decision with regard to that I have drafted an override article and an article to establish a fire department stabilization fund. These articles need to be reviewed by the Department of Revenue and Town Council before we finalize the wording next week. The next item on your agenda is a review of all of the draft articles for the Town Meeting warrant for April of 2023. You have that full draft in your packet. The articles are too numerous to summarize. I will highlight one set of related issues that requires further analysis and discussion. The cost of improvements to the wastewater treatment facility is now estimated to be approximately 10 million more than the 24 million approved by Town Meeting last year. A debt exemption for this project was also approved on the election ballot. This inflation-driven spike in costs requires us to revisit our debt management plan in order to avoid a tax increase. The Finance Director and I are working with staff and bond advisors to evaluate myriad options, including reallocation of existing funds, new revenues, and deferring other borrowing projects, which will be presented for consideration after the warrant is closed, but before the Finance Committee votes its recommendations. And that concludes the business agenda. In the, on the consent agenda, you have a memo from Tricia Favouli, our assessor, describing a payment in lieu of taxes agreement negotiated with the Barnstable County Fairgrounds for their solar installation. Town Council has approved this agreement as to form, and I recommend approval of this and all other items on the consent agenda. And that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Johnson-Stabbe. We'll move on to vote seasonal wage rates for FY 2024. Did you have anything particular else that you wanted to say about this before we ask questions?
Just to note that you have the schedule in your packet, and again, I want to highlight that we have grades two through 11, and those, all of those pay rates are, the amounts shown here are increased 15% over the prior amounts. And then below that, you see the four elections positions listed, Inspector, Election Clerk, Deputy Warden, Deputy Clerk, and Election Warden, and the amounts there represent approximately an 11% increase. And those were reviewed with the Town Clerk, and he is supportive of those amounts.
Thank you. Good question, Mr. Johnson.
Just how many staff members does this represent?
Oof. You know, I do not have a good head count, but we have a Beach Committee member here who may know the numbers better than I, but the, the Beach Department alone has some 50 employees, and that's by far the biggest.
But these are seasonal, right?
Yes.
So it's a subset of that 50, or is that?
No, those are the seasonal, those are the seasonal staff and the Beach Department alone, and that's by far the biggest department.
So it's people working for usually two, a couple of months.
Correct.
Thank you.
Are we going to still keep that bonus program that we did last year in addition to this?
Yeah, we are. And we, we're probably going to adjust the, some of the details of how that bonus program works, but the budget does allow for continuation of a bonus program.
Adjusting the dates to be more effective?
Yeah, to really fine-tune it for the retention purposes that, that we're looking to achieve. Yeah.
Great. Any other questions or discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the seasonal, seasonal wage rate increases.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I had, I wanted to make one further clarification that I just recalled, and that is, there's one position listed, Night Watch Harbor Master, and that is a position that has not been used for many years, so we would like to strike that position from the schedule.
I'll entertain a motion to approve?
I, I'm, so move.
One more question. I see there's a line through that and also a couple other lines. Are the ones that are also struck also being deleted, or?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I would second that.
Great. I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Move on to discuss override for fire staffing.
And I'm going to go ahead and load that presentation. So as we discussed at some length on January 7th, this override is driven by the staffing requirements of the six-station model. This chart shows the minimum required staffing for each station under a five-station scenario, and these numbers represent the minimum start-of-shift staffing. So that's the number of firefighters, lieutenants, and captains that we need at the beginning of each shift in order to staff, in the case of the, the first column, five stations, and that total is 16 at the start of each shift. For six stations, the minimum required is 18, and for a model that would be more preferred by the fire chief for six stations, that minimum staffing number would be 20. And those numbers, you roughly multiply by four for the four shifts to cover every day. This is just the daily staffing requirements. So I'm not going to go through the whole discussion as to how we got to the number of 14 additional firefighters that we reviewed on Saturday, but just in overview to remind folks that that's the number that is absolutely needed, that we feel is needed to sustainably staff six stations on a daily basis without having excessive forced overtime.
Pete, excuse me.
Yes.
And that information that we did discuss on Saturday is fully available, right? If the public wants to?
The video, yes, the videos.
So in context, if they wanted the rest of that, I just, I just want to make that for the record.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. So the video is available, and certainly the, the slide presentation is available as So, yeah, the other, the other point that I just want to touch on here is, you know, we have, the, the timing issues are, are interesting. There are a lot of diff, there are several different timing schedules that we're looking at in terms of the construction of the station and the staffing of the station. And the additional staffing that we're talking about hiring would be useful and preferred, even if we were never going to six stations. So in terms of if there's any question of, you know, what happens if we hire the staff before the, the new station is ready to operate, that would be great, because it will provide enhanced level of service that would be beneficial, even if there were only five stations to be operated. But again, what's driving, it becomes a minimum requirement, these additional 14 positions are, are really needed if we are going to staff that sixth station. This is a breakout of the cost per firefighter. We've identified the salary, the benefits, and those are the, all of the recurring costs, including the uniform and insurance, that adds up to $106,454 for one firefighter. Multiplying that out by 14 brings us to $1,490,000. $1,490,357. We did not include any one-time equipping costs in the override, because this is recurring money, so we wanted to look at just the recurring costs. And I do want to make note that while all of the new hires will be firefighters, when the department is increased by this amount, by the 14 additional firefighters, we will need to promote four lieutenants to provide the proper level of supervision. And that cost to promote four of the existing positions to lieutenant is approximately $14,000 per year, and covered within the override plan here. So I referenced the timing issues earlier. The Hatchville Fire Station construction could be completed as early as the spring of 2024. More likely, it would be later than that, either late 2024 or early 2025. With respect to the timing of hiring these firefighters, again, we're not able to predict precisely exactly how long it's going to take. That's a large number of firefighters to be hiring, and again, the labor market is such, and that we expect it's going to take some time. We won't be able to hire them all in one year. So the fire chief, working with his staff, and in dialogue, came up with what we think is a reasonably optimistic scenario, that we would hire seven firefighters by November of '24. Again, this is assuming they're funded at town meeting in April and through the override in May, and then the balance of the seven firefighters by November of 2025. Can't guarantee that that's going to happen. That's just a reasonably optimistic estimate.
Isn't the housing availability going to be a big issue there?
Housing, it's a big issue for all employers across the state, absolutely, yep. So I want to touch on this dilemma that, you know, I know it raised some concerns with the last override, that it took more than a year to hire the firefighters, as we said it would before the last override. But we've come up with a plan this time that assures the voters that all of the money raised by this override will go to the hiring of the fire department, wages, and costs associated with hiring firefighters. And the way that we do that is by creating a stabilization fund. So we vote an override in the spring of this year for the FY '24 budget. We spend some portion of that override in the first year, but not all of it, because day one of fiscal year '24, we won't have filled any of these positions. So how can we assure that that money is going to be spent on the fire department? And the answer to that is by depositing the money in a stabilization fund dedicated to the fire department. So that accomplishes two things. One, it assures the voters that the money's going to the purpose that they voted for. And secondly, it provides a cushion, so that if we have a recession, we have difficulties with revenues, and we have difficulties fitting the full cost of the 14 firefighters into the budget when the full cost comes to bear, and that might be FY, you know, probably the full cost won't hit until FY '26. It'll be an increasing amount, a little bit in FY '24, more in FY '25, possibly, depending on how the hiring goes, the full cost in FY '26 or '27. And so the stabilization fund can be used to pay for overtime, benefits, expenses related to the fire department. So again, we can ensure that all of the override money goes to the fire department.
Pete, is the interest from that fund stay in that fund, or does the interest accrued from that go somewhere else?
The interest does stay in the stabilization fund. Is that, is that correct? Is it treated as a trust, so it earns interest? Yes, interest stays with the fund. So this is, this next slide is an illustration of a funding plan under the scenario of a $1.5 million override. For FY '24, based on our assumptions of hiring, of filling seven firefighters by November of 2024, so we'd be part of the way into the fiscal year before we hire half of the firefighters. So we would estimate approximately $600,000 would be needed to pay the wages and expenses associated with those seven firefighters for part of the year. If an override of 1.5 million were approved, we'd have a balance of $900,000 that's not needed in that first year for the firefighters, so that amount would be appropriated to the stabilization fund in FY '24. Carrying that forward to FY '25, following those same assumptions, we hire another seven firefighters by November of '25. The cost for FY '25 would be approximately $1,380,000. The override will have, amount will have grown by the two and a half percent per year, so that's now bringing in $1,537,000, leaving a surplus of $162,000. And then in that, next year, FY '26, we would hope to have all of the firefighters hired, and the full amount, very close to the full amount. Well, sorry, let me say that again. The full amount of the override would be needed for the firefighters' wages and benefits. And in fact, there would be, based on these estimates, and these are all, you know, projected forward, rough estimates when we look at FY '26, there would be a small shortfall in terms of the recurring revenues. It's $15,000. It's not substantial, but that could be covered either, depending on how things are going with revenues for that budget year, we could potentially draw on that stabilization fund to close the gap.
You indicated that the $1,500,000 override is going to cover benefits and potentially some other department expenses. Is that right? Are you projecting those in here as well?
So only the expenses, the override amount of 1.5, and I'll just back up to it. So this is the breakout of how we got there, and it's not for unrelated fire department expenses. It's only for those expenses directly related to hiring the firefighters. So these are the annual recurring costs. Really, the only expense item other than benefits that's in here is the uniform cost of $850. However, when we look at the stabilization fund and how the stabilization funds can be used, there are other one-time costs associated with hiring these firefighters. So the turnout gear, for example, the fire academy training, there are thousands of dollars per firefighter of one-time costs that need to be covered that we could use the stabilization fund to cover. And likewise, we could use the override to cover in this full year, but we didn't, you know, when we looked at what's the right tax increase, the override amount, we wanted to target what is ultimately the recurring costs of all 14 firefighters. That's what that's based on. So quickly, the pros and cons of the larger override, 1.5 million versus the smaller $950,000 override. The advantage of the larger override is that it provides full funding guaranteed with no risk. It maintains maximum budget flexibility to address challenges and priorities in future years, and that's for the entire town budget. The disadvantages, the cons, it's a greater tax impact. And perhaps, with a larger override, it is a greater chance that the override does not pass. And as we've discussed, the downside risk, if you will, of the override not passing is high. We will be in a very difficult situation if the override does not pass. That means the board is back to revisiting, okay, we don't have enough staff for six stations, so we're browning stations out, and all that comes with that.
But if we can't, it's also a possibility we're going to start robbing Peter to pay Paul, to pay for firefighters. We'd be taking money away from other departments, right? So depleting services other places if we don't really start off with sufficient override.
That is the risk. So the smaller override, 950,000, means that as of FY '24, I'm less confident that we have sufficient revenues to be assured that we can pay for all of the costs associated with those 14 firefighters into the future, not knowing what inflation might be, you know, not knowing what the risks of a recession are. However, I, you know, I would not have brought forward the option of $950,000 if I did not feel it was viable. So we're, you know, we're operating in the realm of what is a, what is the right level of conservative estimating versus raising taxes and having, you know, a greater level of assurance that we won't cause a problem in the future. There's always a chance, even with the larger override, right, that inflation, if inflation is 15% for five years in a row, all of this is sort of chump change, right, and we're going to have, we're going to have a problem no matter what. But I am, I am really pretty comfortable with the assumptions that are required in order, on this second, smaller override option. And the reason for that is twofold. One, it's just based on our revenue estimates are really pretty conservative, and, you know, they're only 80% at present. 80% of our most recent actual revenues are being local, sorry, local receipts revenues, not talking about property taxes, so it's a smaller portion. But we're only, we're only relying on 80%. We could have a 20% reduction, still meet our budget. So, you know, two years from now, when the full cost comes to bear, you know, are those revenues still going to be there? Might they even grow? And, you know, in most years, the revenues grow and they don't come down. There could be a dip and a recession. And that's where the stabilization fund provides a much greater comfort level that we can weather that storm, because in the first year, just from the surplus override revenues, we have $350,000 to put into that stabilization fund. And what we would be proposing is to be more aggressive with our revenue estimates, so that we can put an additional amount, probably to the tune of $600,000, from local estimated receipts, so that we would get that stabilization fund up to $950,000 in that first year. And then we get to FY '25, and we have more information. Okay, how many firefighters have we hired? How many do we think we're going to be able to hire this year? And we can adjust, you know, whether we need to put more money into the stabilization fund or not. We'll also be a year further along in terms of the economy. So if we're, you know, the risk that we're talking about is that $600,000 essentially, $550,000, $600,000, the difference between the $1.5 million override and the 950. And even if there is a, even if there is a recession, even if local receipts go down, we'll have a place to go without cutting the other department budgets. I think I've covered the pros and cons, unless there are any other questions? And again, you know, this is for information and discussion tonight, for the board to have more opportunity to hear from your constituents, and then we'll be looking for a vote on the amount of an override next week. So this is sort of sketching out what the stabilization fund might look like in, under option two with the $950,000 override. As I indicated, we'd be looking at putting $600,000 from other revenue sources, plus the surplus from the override, and a stabilization fund balance of 950 after that first year. And then we get to year two, and we consider, depending on what the budget looks like, putting more money into the stabilization fund potentially, or drawing money from that stabilization fund, depending on everything that's going on with the budget mix and the economy.
Say drawn out of that stabilization fund for other uses within the fire department?
For, to pay for fire department, for the wages and expenses for those 14 firefighters, right? This is some information on the tax impact. So I'm showing the tax impact under both scenarios. The first column shows the override of $1,500,000, the second column, 950,000. And just walking through the chart real quick, the first row, what is the tax rate impact per $1,000 of valuation? It's nine cents under the first $1.5 million override, and six cents under the $950,000 override. And that represents an increase of about, well, it results in a new tax rate per $1,000 of $7.01 under the larger override, and $6.98 under the smaller override. The average, the average single-family assessed value for this current fiscal year '23 is $761,884. Applying the tax rate to that average, you come up with an average tax bill of $5,272, and that's FY '23 before the override. And then, what is the cost of the override for that average tax bill? It's $68.57 for an override of 1.5 million, and $45.71 for an override of $950,000.
And that's per year?
Per year.
Plus two and a half percent?
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. This is, this is the increase per year.
Is that tip?
Over and above the two and a half percent increase.
I mean, that's like taking my wife out to dinner, maybe not a chain restaurant, but to one of the local restaurants. It would cost me that amount of money.
No cocktails.
With no cocktails. Maybe tip.
So this chart shows how Falmouth stacks up in comparison to other Cape towns with respect to the average single-family tax bill. And the finance director and I prefer the average tax bill as a measure of comparison for tax burden as opposed to the tax rate, because the tax, the tax values vary widely. You know, if you're in Chatham or Provincetown versus Yarmouth or Sandwich, you know, the values change a lot, and I think what matters most is how much money comes out of your pocket, right? So that's the average tax bill that says how much money is coming out of your pocket. And by that measure, the lowest tax bill on the Cape, average tax bill on the Cape is Dennis, followed by Yarmouth, Barnstable, Eastham, and then Falmouth, at $5,080. And looking at the rank of the 351 towns ranked in the Commonwealth, Falmouth stands at 216. So the lowest being 351, the highest being one, Falmouth is at 216.
We are on the lower side.
We're in the lower echelon. We're not, you know, in the lowest 5%, but we're, you know, we're lower than most communities, yep. And that's all I have. I do have some additional information that I want to hand out with respect to tax exemptions for the board's consideration, but that's all I have on the override itself.
Thank you. Again, we're not taking a vote on this this evening. This is just for discussion. We'll have a voting next week. Any more questions? Any thoughts, discussion?
Well, only that we get pretty much the same services as all the other 351 towns in the state. They're doing pretty well, I mean, in terms of cost effectiveness. And we have a heck of a nicer environment.
I'd say there's a lot less towns that do municipal trash pickup these days. It's very common to have to pay for that yourself.
And a lot of them, everybody's on a septic system. You're absolutely right. So I think when you look at cost effectiveness, Falmouth residents are doing very well.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson-Staub.
Do we want to talk about the potential exemptions as well? We certainly can. I think that fits within the umbrella of the override discussion.
Sure. So I have the one you just gave us.
There's a, there's a little, I just handed out the summary. What you have includes some more details on each of those items, but it's the same information.
And is this information readily available for the public somewhere online, or?
It is, and the finance staff is working to make it even more readily available. But it has been, you know, there have been workshops at the senior center. It's been distributed to the Falmouth Service Center, and it's well-known to all of the staff in the finance department, so that when they are interacting with taxpayers on a regular basis, they're raising these considerations for those who are eligible.
Right, thank you. So for the public's benefit, the real estate tax relief document we're looking at has relief for blind persons. for blind persons, veterans, seniors 65 and older, senior 65 and older, surviving spouse, hardship, senior tax work off, which is not currently offered in Falmouth, so it's something we'd have to discuss how to make that work if we wanted to. Veterans tax work off, again, not offered in Falmouth right now, and CPA exemption not currently offered in Falmouth.
There are some income limitations as to whether you qualify or not.
Definitely.
That's correct. And the other one that we have talked about that will have some analysis and a, and a full discussion is the residential exemption as well. And I would just say that the, in order to adopt the, any of the programs that Falmouth does not currently have, does require a town meeting vote.
That's good to know.
I'd just like to comment, I, I think you've made a very strong case for the, the 1.5 million to actually operate the fire department at 100% capacity, which is what we asked to, to find out. So we know that if we go with the 950, we know we're gonna have to find other revenue somewhere else to supplement that if we really want to fully staff the fire department. Otherwise, I think we probably have to fall short of the full staffing of 20 and probably satisfy ourselves with 18 and only have two people in Hatchville for who knows how long.
Yeah, let me, if I could follow up on that. So what, what I'm proposing under both override amounts is the same 14 additional positions. And the, the difference between the two is to what extent we need to generate some new revenue sources and, and rely on a combination of, you know, stability and growth with existing revenues and the stabilization fund to, you know, if the timing were, were, were bad and a recession came within the next couple of years, we could still hire the 14 firefighters and not cut any of the other department budgets by drawing on that stabilization fund. So I, I feel pretty comfortable about both options. Certainly, if there are other department initiatives, other select board strategic priorities that you want to increase the budget above existing level services, those opportunities will be reduced under the lower override amount. I, you know, and I, I don't envy the board's decision. I think it, I think it's a difficult decision because there is so much riding on success, right? And if you knew that both would pass, that's, you know, that's one set of considerations. Then you're just looking at the tax impact. But if, you know, to what extent does the higher dollar amount change your confidence level of passage? Because, again, from my perspective, we can make this work with the smaller override.
I would have to say that now that the cat's out of the bag and people are sitting at home watching and saying, well, if you can do it with the 950, then you should do it. I mean, I feel like it's, it's a bit of a mixed message. It's clear that we need the 1.5, but then you're saying that you can do it with the 950. So, I mean, it seems like we're kind of pushed into having to, to choose that now, because I know some people that are not interested in seeing their taxes go up because they're on limited budget are just gonna insist that that be the number, because we've put it out there that we can make it work. So I, I feel like.
It strongly suggests that letting the cat out of the bag is the wrong terminology for how this is being considered.
The fact that it could be done with 950, but we're talking about the 1.5.
Well, he just gave, he just gave a presentation not knowing what the, what the economical landscape's gonna be anyway. So if you go for the highest number, just because we want to put a little extra in our pocket, it still may or may not work, given the economics going forward.
Well, I don't think we're putting anything extra in our pocket, just establishing.
I'm not saying in our pocket, I'm talking about in these funds that he's already said will, will be able to operate the number at the, at the fire department that we're looking for, correct?
So my understanding is the 1.5, we know we will use all of that money to fund the firefighters. We go the 950 route, then we will, we have funds to make up the difference, but it gives us less flexibility in the future, not knowing what, what economics is gonna look like, what inflation is going to look like, what other needs are gonna be met, or unmet. So if, if we're saying now we want 14 firefighters, and then next year we say we need to put more money into, you know, insert item.
A coastal resiliency person.
Exactly. And if we use the 950, and we've then had to use other monies to make up, to get to 1.5, then we may not be able to do a coastal resiliency person. I'm just, I'm completely making this up.
That's a pretty good example, I would say, because that's one of the things that we're gonna be hoping to fold into the budget.
So I think when we discuss this and the two options, we need to make that very clear, it's like, yes, we can do it either way, but one, we have significantly reduced flexibility in what we can do in the future, and one of them, we have more stability.
But maybe, maybe I'm not understanding this correctly, but the added money that we talked about at the 1.5, the added money goes into, if, if, if the added position, say, the coastal resiliency position, isn't identified, how do, how do you sell that to the voters if they don't know what that extra money's going for?
Yeah, no, let me, let me clarify that. So as Anjali said, the, the one, the override amount is gonna go to the fire department, period.
Okay.
Where, where it gets, where there is a, an effect on other department budgets, it's with budget flexibility, right? So, you know, let's say, you know, let's say there's a, there's a mild recession, right? And, and let's play out both overrides under a mild recession option. You know, revenues decline, not dramatically, but they, instead of growing, they decline a little bit. So under both scenarios, we can fund the firefighters, we're fine. But under the, the $950,000 scenario, I'm, I'm relying on local receipts more than I would have otherwise, and so the budget's tight. So I don't have flexibility in those local estimated receipts, not the override money. In the local estimated receipts, there's less money available for other purposes.
Whereas if we had the 1.5 override, we know that those are funded no matter what happens in, with economics.
There would be $600,000 more money available for other purposes. Now, and let me just, let me just raise another sort of part of the conversation, because part of the way that we can raise those additional revenues, it's not purely just relying on the whims of the economy. We're going to be proposing some, some, some new revenues, and for example, an increase to the ambulance fee, right? So those, most of the ambulance fees are paid by insurance, but those that are, well, most are paid by insurance and, and the insurance reimbursement is capped. But even in that scenario, there's an application process where you can say, okay, you know, our fee was X, we, you know, you reimbursed us less than that amount, and at the end of the year, we submit a bunch of paperwork, and the fire department has been doing this for years, which not all towns do, which is fantastic, submits that to the federal government to get a reimbursement for part of the, of the, of the revenue that was not received, part of the fee that was not received. And then there are private, there are private pairs.
Where does that money go?
It goes into the general fund. It's a local estimated receipt. It goes into the general fund. So we believe the finance director has looked at the ambulance rates across the Cape, and we're, we're well below average. We believe that with a reasonable increase, that's affordable, that we can raise another $150,000. So that would be an example of a revenue source that the board can consider to help make the funding plan more secure with the smaller override.
Those ambulance receipts that you get from the insurance, that's from the, the patient's insurance, right?
Yes.
So if they have a copay that's required, right, they're still gonna have to put money into it.
And that won't change whether.
It's not gonna change one way or another, but in terms of, you know, having a more robust staff here, where maybe we can cover some of those costs, you know, it's, it means that people, ultimately, it's robbing people to pay a pawn in a way. If, if somebody's a victim and, of whatever malady and has to call on an ambulance, they're gonna pay that copay regardless.
Whether we increase the rates or not.
It'll still come out of their pocket, either if they have to pay twice, or they have to pay more on the 1.5, they're still paying that bump, right?
Except in one case.
So either way, Sam, they're paying.
But all of us are paying for it to cover what might be stuck on one individual. That's the difference.
Do you have a question or a comment?
All of us are paying a small amount of tax to make up that difference, is what I'm saying.
I did a while ago. I don't know.
It's all right.
It's okay.
All right, well, we.
Okay.
Again, we're not making a decision this evening, just more super thought.
Right.
All right.
Thanks, Peter, for that.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to review of April 2023 town meeting articles. Peter, you have 45 minutes, and I'm gonna try to hold you to that.
Fair enough. Okay, so I'm, I'm not going to talk about the sort of standard recurring articles. So I will start with Article 5, and these numbers may change between now and your next meeting. So Article 5 is a draft of what the override article might look like, and you'll see that it says, oh, no, I apologize. Article 5 is the stabilization fund, creation of the stabilization fund.
Question for you, Peter?
Yes.
Would you recommend we do that either way?
Um, yes, under either override scenario, yes, I would recommend it either way.
But I mean, even, even if the, either article override doesn't pass at town meeting, would we still want to have a stabilization fund?
Probably not.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the, really, the whole purpose, the reason to create, you know, we don't have a stabilization fund for every department. The only reason that we're creating one for the fire department is because it provides us a mechanism to put a place to put unused override funds and to, you know, help provide a cushion to pay for the cost of those additional firefighters.
To roll them over.
Specifically.
To when you actually incur the expense.
Right.
So, and I apologize, so would it make sense to put that article second, then? It doesn't really matter?
So my thinking in putting it first was that if the override, the override vote is going to put money into a fund, the fund needs to exist before you can put the money into the fund.
Okay, thank you.
That'll be part of that presentation.
Right.
Okay.
Right, we'll do, I'll have a presentation that addresses how these pieces fit together.
Kind of puts it together.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so Article 5 creates the stabilization fund. Article 6 is the override article. So that reads, "To appropriate a sum of money to pay for the wages, benefits, and expenses associated with 14 additional firefighters, and to appropriate a sum of money into the stabilization fund for fire department wages and expenses contingent upon voter approval of a proposition 2.5 override ballot question." And yes, I inserted the word "into," that was missing in the draft.
Okay.
Can I ask you a quick question, because it has to do with, if we were to, you know, propose a one, if town meeting were to propose a 1.5 million dollar override and it failed, then we would have no override money at that point. So when would we be able to go back to the public to ask for the 950,000 override?
A year, a year hence, you know, unless, so the override needs to be approved at an election ballot, unless we want to call a special election for an override, which, if the first one didn't pass, you know, politically, I don't know that you want to hold a special election to, you know, consider again an override, so.
But it is an option.
It is, it's legally an option, yes.
Under our charter, can town meeting, can on-town meeting floor the amount of the override be changed? If we propose 150, can town meeting change it to 950 or vice versa?
So that gets into, it gets into the timeline of town meeting versus the election ballot.
Okay.
And the, when we discussed the, the date of town meeting, I believe the timeline for the election ballot is not going to work if we change what's on the ballot at town meeting.
I thought town meeting was timed to allow us to do that.
I thought, I, I, that's what I recall is the reason why we did it that way.
So I, I would need to double, double-check it, but what I'm, what I'm recalling is that we have time to pull something off of the election ballot, right? So if we, if we weren't sure about a specific override, but we knew exactly what it was gonna say, and we, we put it on the ballot and then town meeting votes it down, there's enough time to pull that off of the ballot.
Okay.
The question is whether an amendment, whether we would have that same ability, because the, you know, the.
Didn't they amend something on the floor, on the budget, and the budget, everything that's passed?
Well, you can amend the town meeting actions, but you can't change what's already slated on the ballot.
The election ballot is, right. I, I'll have to study those timelines again and see if we have the ability to adjust the amount of the override after town meeting. It does, in order to get the ballot measure onto the election ballot, there has to be a select board vote, right? So, so a town meeting vote doesn't get us there, right? If, what, what we had anticipated was select board votes to put something on the ballot, and then you get an either up or down at town meeting, and then we can handle that, because you've already voted in advance of town meeting to put it on the ballot.
So if we, if we put a number, and town meeting will also change said number, then we'd have to have another meeting to vote the new number.
That's right.
On the ballot, yeah.
I don't know if.
And you couldn't, you couldn't word that in, in, in the vote on a scale between such and such to encompass that, that flexibility at town meeting? In the language of the, of the ballot vote?
I don't, I don't believe so. But what, what we potentially could do is vote both overrides, right? You could vote two, knowing you're gonna pull one off.
Oh, that's a thought.
It'd save, that would save you a year at least.
I got one more question, if I could. I don't know if it's outside the scope for this discussion, I should have asked it when we were on the other agenda item, but I think if we get to town meeting and we haven't really fully explained the SAFER grant and why it hasn't been used and why it's not an option, if it's not, or if it is, I think we should really, for our next meeting on the 30th, we should review that one more time and just say, this is what the limitations are, maybe we can use some of that, maybe that would, discussion would lead us to be more in favor of the 950.
I, I would, you know, we're talking about the override article. I would suggest it is within the scope, if that's agreeable to you. I'd be happy to comment on it briefly, because I, I agree, it's an important question. And the simple answer right now is there is no, there is no grant available to apply for at this time. So the, the timeline doesn't line up. You can apply for a SAFER grant to fund positions that are not currently in your budget.
Right.
And there's no, there's, there's no grant to apply for at, at this time.
The grant cycle is not.
Right.
Okay.
Right, and it's delayed. I think, you know, I think it's been more than a year since the grant opened because of, you know, the, what's happening at the federal level and Congress funding the budget that includes the SAFER grant. Now, if that were to change next week, I would suggest that we apply for it. But it's, you know, it's a piece. We, it's not, it's not workable to try to hire 14 firefighters under a SAFER grant, because the SAFER, SAFER grant is temporary.
Right, but I was thinking maybe there could be four or six, and then we would adjust down what our needs are.
Yes, absolutely. There, there is a way to, to incorporate a SAFER grant for a portion of the positions to be funded, absolutely.
And would that go into the stabilization fund, if you didn't use it, whatever was left?
So this, I mean, the grant funds per se, it would just sort of change the whole funding plan. The grant funds would have to be spent on actual firefighters hired.
Would use that money first.
Right, we'd use that money first.
Which would protect money that was in the stabilization fund, though.
But we'd probably change our strategy, though, on the override, because then we wouldn't want to hire 14. We would subtract whatever we thought we could put into the SAFER grant out of that, because we can't use the SAFER grant, because we've already created these positions through the override.
Right.
Correct.
Right, we would still be hiring 14 in total, you know, let's, and four might be a reasonable number, so you'd apply for four on the SAFER grant and, and fund 10 within the budget.
So if there's any information that you could find for next week, that'd be great.
Well, I, I mean, the information is there's no grant.
Right.
There is no, there, there will be no information unless they make an announcement between last week and next week, that something changes on the federal level.
You can't.
Doesn't usually work that fast.
Can't really investigate and, and say, there might be one next week, or, it's just a guess, right?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, continue.
Okay, so that brings us to Article 7, capital stabilization standard. OPEB is eight, that's standard. Article nine, transfer sum of money within the FY '23 budget. Standard article, we'll have the specifics in about a month. Standard article, we'll have the specifics in about a month.
Excuse me, could we, um, are we gonna stay with the four hundred thousand for the OPEB?
That's a, that's a, a, a standard amount that's in your fiscal policy, yes.
Right.
Yes. I think it's five hundred.
Five hundred now?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Uh, so Article Ten is a, is a standard article to supplement the current fiscal year budget. And again, we'll have the details on that in about a month. Article Eleven is to rescind debt authorizations. This is just sort of a, a housekeeping item where there has been borrowing authorized, but the money was not actually borrowed. And you have to go to town meeting to say, you gave us permission, and it's, it's for, for a portion of, in all of these cases, it's not that the project wasn't done, it's that there was a certain amount that was authorized to borrow, we borrowed less than the amount authorized. And then in order to get it off our books, so there, it's not a liability, we need a vote to say, okay, there was a ten million dollar borrowing authorization, we borrowed nine point one million, we want to get the other nine hundred thousand, close it out, and rescind that authorization, so it's not on our, on our books. The next article is similar but different. So this is where we borrowed money for a capital project and actually have the money in a bank account and have not spent it all. And in that case, the, the funds cannot be closed out to free cash, they have to be repurposed, appropriated for a capital purpose that has the same or longer borrowing term. Uh, and we're still looking into whether we, this will be a standalone article or part of one of the, um, the borrowing authorization articles. It would probably be the wastewater treatment facility where we would say, you know, okay, to pay for this wastewater treatment facility, we will reauthorize this, these borrowed funds for this purpose. Next article's revolving fund standard. Article Fourteen is, was submitted by the Falmouth Retirement Board. They are proposing to increase the base, the wage base upon which the annual cost of living adjustment is applied for retiree pensions. Right now, um, one of the few downsides of the Massachusetts municipal pension is that the cost of living adjustment, unlike social security, social security has a cost of living adjustment that applies to the entire benefit amount. For a municipal pension, that cost of living adjustment is only applied to a maximum of, I believe, eighteen thousand dollars. And that's the maximum under state law, and municipalities can be below that threshold. In Falmouth, we're applying that, uh, cost of living adjustment presently to the first fourteen thousand dollars of the pension benefit. This article would raise that fourteen thousand dollars to sixteen thousand dollars. It seems like a small amount, and it is, on a per-person basis. However, the cost is not insignificant to the town, hence the, the small adjustment from fourteen to sixteen as opposed to eighteen.
That's a fourteen percent increase in cost.
Right.
And that's more than inflation. More than what social security is boosting our benefits by, just to give you a parallel.
Right, right.
Okay.
Is this something that the select board will recommend or finance committee?
Finance committee.
Thank you.
The next article is to, is another article to rescind acceptance of the civil service statute for police and fire. And the only reason that this is here is because the legislature has not acted upon the town's petition to withdraw the police department from civil service. As you know, we, the board just voted to submit the fire department exit, to submit special legislation to the general court. The town council, Maura O'Keefe, has conferred with some other attorneys around the state, including an attorney for the Mass Police Chiefs Association. And it is her opinion that we can exit civil service even if the state does not act on that petition. But as part of that process, we would need to adopt, we would need to have town meeting vote this article. So that's why that's there.
Have other towns done that already?
There are towns that are doing that now, yes.
Have they been successful?
Uh, so, yes, they are, you know, it's, the, it's uncharted legal water, so they're doing it. They have not faced a legal challenge to this point. I can't promise you that they won't.
So there's no case law yet, it's?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Thank you.
Seems like town meeting should have the right to rescind the vote if they want to, right?
Yeah, and I mean, I think you'll need to, the town council will have a written explanation for you. And we can have her attend the, the next meeting if, if you have any question about whether or not you want to put this on the, on the warrant. We should have town council available to answer your questions on it. She's, you know, I can relay that she's pretty comfortable that we can do this without repercussions.
But we're not voting next meeting on the recommendations of this yet.
You are voting at the next meeting to put it on the warrant or not put it on the warrant.
Right, okay.
Yep. But not the recommendation. Okay, so Article Sixteen is the first of four petition articles. So I'm gonna skip right over those because.
I'm sorry, hold on.
Yeah.
You said, a few, a few line items ago, you said we wouldn't have information to describe some of these things for another month.
Right, so there, and what that timeline's got is, um, we, for financial articles, you have the general purpose of the article, that gets printed in the warrant. And then you have a recommendation, which is printed in the town meeting booklet, which provides the details of.
So we'll have all the information we need the next time we have to vote this.
So actually, the way, actually, the way it plays out is it's the finance committee that votes the recommendations for the specific dollar amounts and how they're funded.
Thanks.
Sure.
Sorry, guys.
Well, number sixteen, because there was a Scribner's error, I think that's what we call, call it. The very last, well, the, the last sentence on that page, it says facilitate the carbonization, should be decarbonization?
Absolutely correct, that's been pointed out.
Thank you, I want to see that corrected.
Yep.
So it's not the town that's assessing the feasibility, it's the developer. Do you agree we'll allow the town to better assess the feasibility?
But we can't make edits like that.
It's both, because, you know, we, the, yes, the developer needs to assess the feasibility, and then the town's gonna do studies to evaluate the impact.
So we always, uh, allow petition articles to just go ahead without comment. Do we have to by law?
So the, by law, these petition articles must be placed on the town meeting warrant.
And if they don't have any basis in law for actually inducing us to act?
Yes, you can recommend indefinite postponement, and you can comment on it. But you do not have the choice about putting it on the town meeting warrant, it has to go on the warrant.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, I'm gonna skip over all of the petition articles in the interest of time.
You're at seventeen and a half minutes.
Okay. So that brings us to Article Twenty. To appro, to transfer and appropriate a sum of money from the unspent balance of Article Seven of the April twelfth, two thousand twenty-one town meeting for the purpose of wage adjustments for union settlements and non-union employees of the town. So what this article does is it broadens the purpose, it's an existing, this was previously approved by town meeting, but when it was originally approved, the article and the explanation referenced union wage settlements. This broadens the purpose to allow those funds to be used for non-union as well as union employees. And the board will be hearing a specific proposal that is driving this request in executive session next week. The next article is to see if the town will appropriate a sum of money from free cash for, for the following purposes. There are three identified in the article. One is to support opioid use disorder treatment. One is to support Falmouth fireworks celebration, and the third one is to retain a consultant to conduct independent department reviews of one or more town departments. So that last item, the first, I'll go, I'll go through them all very quickly. The opioid settlements, uh, this is the, the, the best process in dialogue with town council and the town accountant and the finance director. We will be, these are funds received through the lawsuits. And in order to have the ability to spend them, we need to appropriate it. And the, the money comes in as a, as a local receipt and then gets deposited into the general fund, it's, it, it's sort of complicated the way, the way it's set up. So we're, we're funding it with free cash based on the amount that we know has already come in.
Madam Chair, could I have a question?
Absolutely.
So is it, uh, clear what the dollar figure will be on annual basis?
Uh, it, it, we do have a chart of what is expected to be received on an annual basis, and, and we're told that that's a high confidence level, that those are the actual amounts. And we have, uh, the amount that we'll be appropriating, most of it will have already been received.
Do you, can you share what the?
It, it's, the, it's, it's a, it's a funny pattern, it's like eighty thousand one year, sixty thousand the next, and bounces up and down a little bit, but it's in that range per year.
That's pretty good.
It's significant.
The county, the representative from the county at the opioid summit last week said that the county is only getting seven thousand per year. Seems funny.
Well, I think with the, because we're the ones that bear most of the cost, and that's what it was based on. Because they, they don't provide fire, and, you know, they don't provide ambulance and police services.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. The next article is to appropriate a sum of money for the purpose of repairing the Lawrence School elevator and replacing the Morse Pond fire alarm. And other costs related.
Twenty-two.
This article, uh, will be funded by appropriating, uh, funds from unspent school capital articles. Article Twenty-three is to appropriate a sum of money for the purpose of funding design, permitting, and construction of the roof replacement for East Falmouth Elementary, North Falmouth Elementary, and Morse Pond Elementary schools. So that's OPM and design money, not construction. Uh, and those, all three of those buildings have leaks, and, uh, normally these would be November articles. But they, um, they really need to move forward, and given that we need to do design work before we have a reliable cost estimate for construction, we felt it was really important to get this design process started.
All flat roofs.
Right. Article Twenty-five, um, is to appropriate a sum of money for design and permitting.
Twenty-four.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over one of, one of the major articles on the warrant, thank you, Scott. So Article Twenty-four is to appropriate a sum of money for the purpose of funding design and construction of improvements to the wastewater treatment facility on Blacksmith Shop Road. This is the, this is a supplemental appropriation, we just appropriated twenty-four million dollars for this purpose because of the extraordinary spike in inflation. These costs are now estimated to be some ten million dollars higher than originally anticipated. And this is, this has the finance director and I scrambling to look at many different options to raise revenues, um, to repurpose existing funds, and to consider deferring other capital projects so that we can, um, appropriate the, the additional funds needed without a tax increase. So this article was approved with a debt exemption and was part of the borrowing plan that we were able to fund without a tax increase. But if we have to increase it by ten million dollars, we need to put together a new plan in order to be able to do that without a tax increase, and that's very much what we want to do. You know, we recognize that the string of successes that we've had in getting debt exemptions approved is because we've delivered on that promise of having debt exemptions that fit within, uh, the total, uh, the total debt level and the, and the debt drop-off, so that we don't increase taxes. So we have a lot of work to do, um, over the next month to put together a plan to accomplish this without a tax increase, and that's what we're working on.
Madam Chair, could I have a question?
Yes.
So have you given any thought to maybe breaking the bid into two separate bids? So one for the building and one for the new sequencing batch reactor? Because when I looked at the scope of the project, it seemed like you might need two different type contractors to really do the project, one for the construction on the building and another one to do the actual treatment facility improvements?
Yeah, that's, that's definitely an option that we can look at in the mix. I don't know, um, you know, you may know better than I, certainly I would want to talk to Amy and the, the owner's project manager about whether there are, you know, economies of scale, whether the cost is going to go up if we have to do those two projects separately, um, under, under two different bids. But we're looking at all options.
And also, I wonder if there's any opportunity to value engineer the construction on the building, maybe rather than the brick face, maybe it would be some other more conventional.
Yep.
Material. Thanks.
You're welcome, thank you. So the, um, let's see, that brings us to Article Twenty-five, which is the design and permitting of the extension of the sewer system to the T-Ticket Acapescot area. And, uh, on the one hand, we very much want to continue the schedule that we have, um, put in place at the Water Quality Management Committee, working with the finance director, has put together for the overall, uh, comprehensive wastewater management plan. And because of the urgency of improving the, uh, the water quality of our impaired estuaries, we don't want to delay this project. However, if we cannot do it without, without staying within that debt window, if we, if it requires a tax increase, then we're gonna need to seriously consider deferring that project. So that's part of the analysis that we're, that we're working on.
That assumes that the state is gonna let us off the hook.
Yes, it does.
On the demands for increasing our wa, wastewater treatment.
Yes, it does.
Maybe we can use that to ask them for more money.
Good luck.
Yeah.
The next article is to replace a section of water main. Ninety-two linear feet, and I will tell you the cost estimate for that is approximately three point one million dollars.
Ninety-two hundred.
Ninety-two hundred.
Ninety-two hundred square feet.
You said ninety-two.
Thank you.
It's linear feet.
Thank you. Nine thousand two hundred linear feet of eight-inch ductile iron water main. The estimated cost is three point one million. So that, again, is a project that is very much needed. It's in an area that has experienced water breaks, we do not want to delay it or defer it. But if we have to, in order to, um, maintain our pattern of funding capital projects without a tax increase, we may need to consider deferring that as well. Article Twenty-seven is another water article, and this one is to, uh, to conduct a, a survey, a study of our water mains to detect lead and, um, other hazardous materials, and that is a regulatory matter that we need to move on. And it is a smaller item that we would fund out of free cash. Next item is also a water-related article that is required for regulatory purposes. And this one is, um, there, there may be a grant that, that can offset the cost of that project, I believe. But we're going to need to move forward with that regardless.
I have a question from the.
Yes.
Quick, quick comment, that the county just bought a new PFAS detection machine that probably could be borrowed rather than buy a new one, because they're really expensive.
Terrific. The next article is, speaking of PFAS, is a, um, sum of money for evaluating locations for treatment of raw, raw water from the Asshument Well and the Fresh Pond Well. This one is going to be funded by the Air Force. So, um, there may or may not be a need to, um, for the town to appropriate free cash upfront, but it, the cost will be reimbursed, and that's an item that we would not move forward with unless we did have a written agreement with the Air Force to cover that cost. Article Thirty, oh, that didn't. Uh, I see that there was, there's a draft, this article, that didn't get into your, into the board's packet for tonight. To amend the position classification plan, there are two items. One is the diversity, equity, and inclusion position to increase the pay grade from grade eight to grade nine. And the other is to, um, create the new sustainability coordinator position at grade eight. Next article is, um, a change in the fingerprint bylaw that was adopted several years ago by the town. We have found through, uh, dialogue with, uh, the town manager's office and the police department that. and the Police Department that requiring a fingerprint for all liquor license applicants every year is very onerous. Uh, it's actually a, an administrative burden, uh, on the Police Department in particular that is challenging, so we would like to change that to a five-year cycle for liquor licenses. We would maintain the one-year cycle for swap shops and, uh, some of the other licenses that, uh, have a higher, uh, level of criminal risk.
Unless change of ownership, obviously, right?
Any new license, absolutely. Any change of manager, any change of ownership, any new license would require a fingerprint. Absolutely. Thank you. Uh, the next article is also a bylaw change, and this is just to bring the insurance requirements in line with reality. The, the bylaw that we have sets an amount that is unattainable, um, by the taxi operators. Article thirty-three is a bylaw amendment for the flow-neutral bylaw, and this would not change the standards of review for the Select Board in evaluating variance requests. Uh, it is merely a housekeeping change that is required by the Department of Environmental Protection in order to qualify for zero-interest loans, and it really just parses out more specifically the gallons, uh, the, the capacity of, uh, that is, the wastewater treatment capacity associated with each different area. Um, the, uh, the Little Pond Sewer Service area, the T-Ticket Acapescot area, and the rest of the town.
We have a question from Mr. Brown.
Peter, would this be an opportunity to, uh, develop some language so that future development, say, a forty-B developer bought up three lots in a row and put in twenty-four houses, so that we could, uh, have a, a language in place so that those people, those buildings would each pay the same rate that everybody else paid? Or maybe it wouldn't be the same, but not just that one hookup fee for twenty-four houses or?
I don't think we could address that in the, I, I don't think that's a flow-neutral bylaw issue. Um, I want to understand more about the issue that you're, that you're talking about.
Well, for instance, we had that, uh, project in the Heights that's recently, came before us last year, and we were, uh, surprised that the developer was only paying one hookup fee. I think it's eighteen thousand dollars for seven units, and it didn't seem really fair after everybody else had paid that same thing for individual units. And maybe they should get a break and not pay the full fare, but somewhere in between seems more reasonable.
So I think that was the, that was the betterment assessment?
Right.
Yeah, so that's, that would be a, um, we're not able to change, you may recall the, the outcome of that discussion is, we cannot change the betterment assessments once they're implemented.
Right.
Um, we, you know, for any prior projects, we could contemplate a different betterment approach for future projects. But that would not be under the scope of this article.
It would have to be in a case-by-case.
Didn't Mr. Betterman weigh in on that, well, that night?
I'm sure he did.
Yeah, I remember that conversation.
That's a topic of discussion for another time.
Yeah, and, and that would be something that we would want to have lined up before we appropriate construction funds for the sewer extension, because that's when the next betterment will be adopted.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Article thirty-four, uh, is from the Board of Health, and the Board of Health is, um, needs to modernize the, uh, the stable bylaw, and what they are proposing is similar to what we did with recycling, which is to say, um, authorize the Board of Health to develop and, and promulgate regulations rather than have the detailed, um, regulations be in a town meeting bylaw. Article thirty-five is a, uh, housekeeping item that was requested by the town clerk, and it allows, um, it specifies how Saturday office hours are treated with respect to, um, regulatory, um, filing deadlines.
What about snow weather closures, where you have weather-related closures?
Yeah, it's not addressed in this article, and honestly, I don't know how, you know, what the case law is around that. Article thirty-six is, um... It's to, to appropriate some of money to fund some, uh, the relocation of a water main in connection with the work that Eversource is doing to bring the electric line in to provide power for Martha's Vineyard. Uh, and that's one that we'd love to be able to pull off. We have an inquiry with, uh, Department of Revenue to see if, um, the funds, you recall the town's receiving eight hundred thousand dollars in mitigation money from Eversource. This article authorizes spending some of those funds, um, and it may well be needed, but we're consulting with Department of Revenue to see if that can be treated as a grant and, and expended without appropriation. The next article is, speaking of the Eversource easement, they have asked for a modification of that same easement, um, for the specifics of the installation of the, uh, electric line at Loc, the parking lot at the Shining Sea Bikeway on Locust Street.
Is that for staging?
Um, I don't, you know, there's a change in their plan as to where they need to install the electric line, and so they needed to change the, the particulars of the easement that was approved.
Okay.
And I don't have the details on it. Um, and then we get into community preservation articles, which is another category that automatically has to be placed on the warrant. That was my time.
Thirty-five minutes, nice job. Any final thoughts or questions?
Nope. And certainly, you know, if, uh, if you have any questions about these articles that cause you to, you know, particularly that, you know, may cause you to think we may not want to put them on the warrant, feel free to reach out to me, um, individually between the meeting, uh, because, you know, we do need to make the decision. You don't, you don't need to vote a recommendation on the article, but if it's a, you know, if it's a Select Board-sponsored article and you're not sure you want to support it, then, you know, we want to consider not putting it on the town meeting warrant. So, um, if there's any additional information I can provide to help you evaluate that over the course of next week, let me know.
Okay, thank you. Any final thoughts? All right. We will move on to the consent agenda. No one will need to read all of them. Uh, we have one license. We want to hold said license. And then there's three administrative orders. Any holds on those?
Nope.
Then now would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic. And review and vote to approve minutes of meetings.
Oh, uh, geez, I left my notes on my desk. I think there was a few things that need correcting. Yeah, I have a few too, but let's, let's walk through them.
So on December nineteenth, Mr. Johnson Staub, on the second page, there's a minor typographical error, the last line of the first large paragraph there.
Yep.
It is due to rise in internet rates. It is just turned into one word.
I'm sorry, this is his preliminary report.
Sorry, what, what page are you on?
Sorry, this is, uh, page two of December nineteenth minutes.
Okay.
So the first paragraph starts off with your name, and the second one starts off Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund.
Yep.
The last line of that second paragraph.
Oh, yep.
It is-
Missing a space.
Just missing a space.
Um, and I, and I would suggest, I know this is your preliminary report, and later on we do actually do action, but really, there's no, no nouns in here, proper nouns to identify Falmouth Housing Corp., for instance, um, or Falmouth Housing Trust, that kind of gives you an idea of what the heck you're talking about in this, in that paragraph. So I, I, you know, it's just seemed, it was awkward when I started reading. I said, wait a minute, which is which? You know, you're really talking about two different projects there.
Okay.
And if we could back up to the first page?
Page?
Um, in, in the first action, um, number one, um, Chair Taylor called in the open session to order at five-thirty. Mr. Patterson, motion, motioned. You know, neither one of those are verbs, and, and this has been a, kind of a loose thing, but, I mean, really move is the verb.
Correct.
And I think it should be, Mr. Patterson, moved to convene the executive session. I, a lot of times people are using the word motion as a verb, but I think you look it up, you'll find that that's not grammatically correct.
Thank you.
So, on page, oh, you can, more, can I?
Um, on, on the second paragraph below, on, on page two, where we were talking about, um, the information in the second paragraph, but in the third paragraph it reads, "Or Select Board support for the project," and it really needs to be a period right there, strike the N, and then just simply, "Falmouth testing is needed" to be a separate sentence. It just doesn't read well otherwise, I don't believe, but you could take a look at it and see what you think, so that's just a... And then, um, at the bottom of that section, just before business, it doesn't really, it says, "Consent, Eversource easement approvals for electrical cable to provide Martha's Vineyard with electrical, elec-"
Electronic.
Electronic, surprise.
Yeah, that's not right.
Electric supply. Approval of the easements and other town items is recommended by what? By whom?
If I may make an observation, some of the minutes, the other person who wrote them just referred to your preliminary report because that's just, that's in the packet, and I think that would be appropriate to do moving forward because it, but this is basically just repeating everything that-
Yep.
-is in the packet.
Right.
So just refer to the report and don't summarize it.
Refer to the report. I don't thi, unless you say something that's very off-base from the report, which I don't think you usually do.
But at any rate, my question is, you know, who is recommending it? It seems like there needs to be.
It was me. I was the one-
Oh, I see. Okay. Well, all right, if you wanted, then that corrects it. That'll, that'll be fine. I think that's-
On page three, middle of the paragraph, where it starts off Dave Moriarty, Precinct Six, asks for answers to the questions they asked on, it says five-eight-twenty-two, and I think that should be six-eight-twenty-two.
Yep.
Because later on in the paragraph, it does say six-eight.
Yep.
Good catch.
And then on page four, second-ish paragraph, Rob Dugan, Falmouth Heights, asked about P dot two, item C, but it doesn't say that it's referring to the document that was in the packet. It doesn't say what it's referring to. And then a little bit further down the paragraph.
Is that the zoning board waiver or something that he was asking about?
He, I, if I recall, that was-
That was them filing for the, uh, to overrule, override the zoning.
Well, see, that, that's what I, I remember that being the section, that being the document that said if, yeah, if we didn't respond within ten days. So whatever the name of that document is, needs to be referred to here. The legal agreement that they wanted us to sign.
Of the entry and access agreement.
Exactly, whatever it was called. Uh, a little bit further down, Mr. Brown, the third line, "He is not inclined to deny access to Kite Park but does not want to include the other two sites." I'm, I'm not sure I understand what that's saying or if that's correct.
I would say the Worcester Court and the, um, what's the name of that park? Is it Central Park the name of that park?
Yeah, I, I think the sentence actually works. It's a little confusing. There's a lot of negatives, but you're saying, you know, I think your intent was, let's go ahead and give them approval initially, when you made that comment was, you're okay with approval for the Kite Park, but not okay with approval of the other two locations.
Correct.
Okay, all right, then that makes sense. Um, and then Ms. Scott Price said, "Good points have been raised, including Article seven." I think it's Article ninety-seven.
Yep.
That's all I got on page four. What about you, Sam?
That's it?
I got page three.
Oops, sorry.
I'd like to clarify on the, uh, third paragraph down. Mr. Brown does not have a full understanding of the project. What I think I said was, I didn't, I did not have a full understanding of the project on the first, uh, request for entry to DuBourian Testing, but now I do have a better understanding of the scope of the project, and I'm not inclined to have, uh, I think I said that later.
Nick Farwin.
I suggested focusing on the Kite Park and doesn't want to have a concept of what would really, it just doesn't really make sense, but does not have a concept of what would really be on the ground at the site. What I said was that after more, uh, research and understanding better and comparing the job up in Barnstable, I didn't say all this, but my point was, I did not have a full understanding the first time we authorized entry, but subsequently came to have a better understanding, and that was why I didn't want to, did not want to have them, uh, authorized to go to the other two sites, so I'm not-
And that's why I agreed with you, not because I didn't understand it. Believe mine, there, that's right.
Yep.
Anything else on page three or four?
Uh, yeah, on page four, just a spelling of a couple of citizens' names. Mr. Steinbach, I think it's B-A-C-H.
Sorry, what paragraph were you in?
Under five.
Under broadband update.
Page four, broadband update. Alan Steinbach, I think it's B-A-C-H.
I think you're right.
And then Dr. David Eisenberg, there's no E, it's just I-S-E-N. I would have let it go if it wasn't written in there four or five times.
Says the chair noted, and that, just below that, says the chair noted the Select Board supports their efforts.
Right.
To identify school board's efforts, right?
Oh, right.
The efforts to, the outreach to get people help with the broadband issue.
Yes, on page five, uh, the very last sentence of the second paragraph, "Who put him in contact with Mr. Saint Julian?" Saint is just S-T. How we spell is his name.
I know. Does that really help define what happened, you know, our transaction deliberation? I just questioned whether we should be making that level of-
It's his name. I think it should be spelled right.
Okay, well, fair enough.
That's all I have on December nineteenth.
Same. Well, with that, I would move the, um, approval of the minutes of December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and release-
As amended.
As amended, with release to the public, for public access.
Have a motion done a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now moving on to January seventh.
Where it says discussion, that category there, Mr. Patterson noted, I'd like to, for the clarity of what this means, uh, in the school department parlance, it should be out-of-district placement costs. So, so I would put out dash of dash district, because it otherwise does not make sense to anybody as to where, what we're talking about in the way of costs. But this was basically an example of using a stabilization fund. Any other question, thing I would do is just, since we're editing, that line is, "Strike the wood for students that go up and down," and then that's, is an example. Anyway, it's, it's, I'll leave it to the technical editors. Smooth it out if need be.
Sorry, where was that second? I saw the out-of-district placement. Where was that second point?
In the same line. I mean, it really doesn't say-
Oh, I see. Help smooth.
It doesn't explain where it fits into the context of the discussion.
Right, right.
Is an example of a stabilization fund. That's all. That was the only point I was making.
Any other comments? I didn't find anything else.
No, I did not.
And I would motion, or I would entertain a motion, approve.
So moved with, uh, release for public access.
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to January ninth. This is the first one that it says, uh, Town Manager's preliminary report referring to memo in the Select Board packet. I think that's appropriate.
I found those minutes to be essentially correct, so if nobody has any other edits.
Uh, I did have one. On page three at the very top, motion by Scott Zalinski to continue the hearing. So on this one-
Wait a minute, I, I only have two pages. Were we talking about January ninth?
No, it's the next page. That's just the agenda.
Oh, excuse me.
Yep.
Up at the, so after Sam Pa, okay, vote three, yes, two, no, one, no, one, Nancy Taylor. Does it need to say that Doug recused himself?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Or recused, I guess.
You, because you recused yourself earlier.
Right.
You didn't leave, but you didn't participate in discussion.
Well, I did. I went out and said-
Oh, did you? I apologize.
He did, yep, went to the penalty box.
Sorry. Sorry.
And then I apparently voted on the next paragraph, but I didn't.
So, yeah, I think that the minutes need to reflect that Doug recused himself.
Absolutely.
It does, it does say-
I saw that was mentioned in there at the start of that.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I was looking in the wrong place.
But then the, the, the vote afterwards was not-
It just doesn't say that he abstained, it just says, three, yes, one, no.
Okay, so it says earlier that he recused, so.
Yes.
So maybe we add Doug Brown recused, just-
Or abst-, yeah, whatever it needs to say.
Because he didn't vote abstained.
And I didn't vote to close the hearing, because it says 5-0.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure how to make it clear. On page one, at the very, very bottom, the second-to-last sentence says he recused himself, and I didn't know if, if there needs to be something on the vote to say.
Yeah, I think it does. I would put in parentheses, Doug Brown recused.
Okay.
Well, it does say that here, but not in parentheses.
In the vote, though, right?
In the vote.
In the public hearings, Mr. Brown recused himself due to his having a family member who works in the building.
Yeah, but we're talking about in the vote.
Oh, in the vote tally.
Pages later.
Not only does it need to be corrected, but recorded as, as correctly.
Right.
Correct.
Because it says, "Angele, Scott Price, motion to close the hearing, second by Sam Patterson, vote yes, five."
Right, that's also a correct.
So it should be four, with one either abstention or recused. I don't know that, technically, how you record that.
And right, right before the vote, says Mrs. Zelinski asked Attorney Clower if his client would be able to provide soundproofing for the building. Asked if it would be considered, we asked for a price to be considered, but it wasn't a yes or a no at that. They were going to go back and, I don't, I don't remember exactly how it was worded, but it wasn't a, drawn a line in the sand, and that's how this reads.
Correct here. I, I believe the request was that they consider it.
Right, and come back to us.
And then come back either way with whatever they decide to do. It wasn't a condition of-
Right.
-the vote.
Right.
And then I see it says, "Motion by Scott Zelinski to continue the hearing to January 30th, vote yes, three, no, one, and it should be one either abstention or recusal."
Right.
Right.
I don't think you were even back here for that.
No, I wasn't, I'm just saying.
You were still outside.
Correct. But I'm just saying that, it's just a question of how we show that in the minutes.
Right.
I don't have anything else from these minutes. Anybody else?
Nope.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
With release to the public.
All right, so a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and last ones, no, not last ones, just kidding. January 11th.
We're touching on.
This is the-
Listening session.
The listening session, the public listening session that we had.
This was well-recorded.
I, I agree.
Yes.
I've got nothing to edit.
I'm gonna move approval. I would move approval and release to the public.
Second.
Have a motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And last ones, no, not last ones, just kidding. January 11th. This is the-
Listening session.
The listening session, the public listening session that we had.
This was well-recorded.
I, I agree.
Yes.
I've got nothing to edit.
I'm gonna move approval. I would move approval and release to the public.
Second.
Have a motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and last ones, no, not last ones, just kidding. January 11th.
We're touching on.
This is the-
Listening session.
The listening session, the public listening session that we had.
This was well-recorded.
I, I agree.
Yes.
I've got nothing to edit.
I'm gonna move approval. I would move approval and release to the public.
Second.
Have a motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and last ones, no, not last ones, just kidding. January 11th.
We're touching on.
This is the-
Listening session.
The listening session, the public listening session that we had.
This was well-recorded.
I, I agree.
Yes.
I've got nothing to edit.
I'm gonna move approval. I would move approval and release to the public.
Second.
Have a motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and last ones, no, not last ones, just kidding. January 11th.
We're touching on.
This is the-
Listening session.
The listening session, the public listening session that we had.
This was well-recorded.
I, I agree.
Yes.
I've got nothing to edit.
I'm gonna move approval. I would move approval and release to the public.
Second.
Have a motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and last ones, no, not last ones, just kidding. January 11th.
We're touching on.
This is the-
Listening session.
The listening session, the public listening session that we had.
This was well-recorded.
I, I agree. I've got nothing to edit.
I'm gonna move approval. I would move approval and release to the public.
Second.
Have a motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and last ones, no, not last ones, just kidding. January 11th.
We're touching on.
This is the-
Listening session.
The listening session, the public listening session that we had.
This was well-recorded.
I, I agree. And I think, and she, having been a mayor, she could be somewhat sensitive of the fact that it's an impractical approach.
Right.
That it's not really achievable, and I think she picked up on that as well, so, yeah, I, if I could just extend on that, I'm, I was really impressed with the new state leadership that we have, the governor, the lieutenant governor, and all of the staff coming on board. They seemed really energetic, eager to get started, and very sensitive to the issues that we have. Top on their minds, almost every one of them was housing.
And I was really interested in a couple of the workshops I attended. One was the fiscal outlook and how the, is it Division of Local Services?
Mm-hmm.
Like, well, they seemed like a very organized group, and the leaders were really pointing out how they, telling us what their turnaround time is. I got a long list of notes that, you know, certain things that need to be done, filings that need to be timely, you know, all the filings with Department of Local Services should be done in November, so they're not, you know, holding up, you know, getting certified for your tax rate and everything. But another one that was interesting was the workshop on private roads, and I found it really interesting that, maybe this is something that the planning board might take up if I, I'm gonna go to their next meeting and comment, I found it interesting to learn, which I didn't know this before, and I guess I should have, having been on the planning board, the planning board can hold a high enough bond and require a developer with a development with a private road to bond to the level required to, for him to bring that road up to full town standard and submit it for taking by the town at the initial development. And we've got so many of these private roads, and we are letting the developers off the hook by building these roads, and then 20 years later, the residents are like, why doesn't the town fix my road? They, a lot of them don't even realize that they're on a private road and that they're gonna be holding this liability later on, and we've got a lot of these roads that are falling apart. So that was interesting to know that we have the authority to make the developers regulate it. Too bad we're almost at build-out now when, when we learn it. It was just a very informative, a lot of good information at that conference. And I have one more thing to report, that the Beach Committee meeting was on Wednesday. I have to say, the Beach Committee was very disappointed to learn that we didn't put the funding in for the cleaning of the bathhouses, because I know we did that as a trial last year. I think they just assumed that it was gonna be the policy going forward so that the kids don't have to clean the toilets before they go out and be lifeguards. So that's something that may come up again at town meeting, and also there was one other supplemental, I'm sorry, I left my notes at home this afternoon, but, so it was, the cleaning was the biggest one, but there was another issue, I'm sorry, I'll have to come back with that next week.
Okay. We'll be here next week.
Yep.
Go ahead, Sam.
I just wanted to elaborate, I went to the workshop on electrical, electric vehicle implementation. There's a lot of money available for it. We have a really good resource in Steve Tupper from the Cape Cod Commission, who's actively in that area and seems to be up to date. He was one of the presenter at that workshop, but was an extensive download of information on how to access, access that, including putting the infrastructure in to be able to support chargers as a town utility, because obviously you have to provide the power for the thing if you're gonna charge the vehicle. So renewable energy is on everybody's mind, now that's certainly clear from listening to the, you know, our state legislators, and I think we need to be thinking about making sure that we take advantage of the grant money so that we're in a position to be able to implement that. I mean, car manufacturers are moving toward electric vehicles, I've now driven one, pretty impressive, and the, these things are gonna be financially very attractive to the average car driver and owner, because they're less expensive to operate, as long as your electric rates are reasonable, which brings the question of sourcing electrical energy to the fore. But very impressed at the state level that everybody's high on this, including electrical school buses, electric, battery-operated school buses, which, you know, we have a lot of them, they run around, but they sit for intervals of time when they can recharge. This is the first time I've heard a good explanation of Level One, Level Two, and Level Three charging, and the pros and cons of each one of them. The Level Three charger, which is a DC high-speed charger, is the most expensive in terms of implementation. The Level Two takes hours to recharge a battery, and the Level One takes a long time, you know, like 12 hours. So when we're looking at installing these kinds of things, I mean, obviously knowing what their capabilities are is very important, and I can imagine, readily imagine, we're recharging a, a, a school bus, it's gonna take that high-level charger, and those are considerably more expensive to install and support. So anyway, it was a really excellent workshop, and we have an exp-, we have somebody on the Cape Cod Commission that we can use as a resource, and I think that's the important thing. Before, if we wanna take a look at grant opportunities, he seems to be on top of that, but if we need to know how to fill out an application for a grant, I think he's the guy that will really help us make sure that we really are addressing what the criteria is for us to be a candidate to receive the grant. And I guess we've had problems with that in the past where we didn't, we didn't actually qualify because we didn't, you know, dot all the i's and cross all the t's, didn't understand what the base requirement was for the grant itself.
Thank you, Sam.
Could I throw one more comment on the, the private roads thing? So that was well-attended by a lot of DPW directors and mayors and Select Board members, and one thing that was like universal agreement was that the Chapter 90 funds are not adequate. The DPW director from Gloucester said he's currently on a 40-year repaving schedule, and that's just being realistic of what he can expect to be able to do. That's just on private, public roads, and he's got a lot of private roads that he can't, can't deal with either, and so the whole room was very commenting on that Chapter 90 problem, the lack of equity in the rural towns and the smaller towns. And the one other important part of that was the, the survey at the end of the MMA, I guess there's someplace in that survey that you can fill out and request that the Chapter 90 funds be included, and that is part of the lobby that the MMA does on behalf of the constituents.
Towns.
So we might all wanna take a look at that survey and see if, I, I think it's in the survey that you fill it out. Comments on what you think should be changed?
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Zelinski?
Good.
All right, I will report that I also attended the MMA. The sessions I went to, the first one was, it was called something about working from home, but they actually talked a lot more about retention in employees with a piece of it of working from home. And then in the afternoon, Sam and I both attended the one on housing. I was looking forward to hearing from the gentleman from Cambridge, but he wasn't able to attend, so we heard from-
Pepperell.
Pepperell, yes, very interesting, and how they, they thought they did things very, very well, and then there was a lot of opposition to the changes they wanted to make in zoning, and it ultimately failed at town meeting, so kind of learning from them. So what I, I would like to ask, because I know Peter was there as well, if you all could send me your notes, and I could compile them and send them through Mr. Johnson's stab to the appropriate departments, just for information. If you have handwritten notes, I'll take them if they're legible. If not, I'll ask you to type them up before sending them to me. Also, on Saturday, I did not attend MMA because I attended the Massachusetts Black Lawmakers Roundtable, and we had a presentation from Michael Curry, who was the former president of NAACP, talked about inequalities in healthcare and the work that he's doing, which was really interesting, and I thought it'd be nice to have him come to Falmouth and talk about those inequalities and what we can do with, you know, having Cape Cod healthcare here. And the last thing I might have, should have mentioned in this announcement, on Thursday, this Thursday, the 26th, at 3 o'clock is the grand opening for McGann's Crossing, and Michael Lasso asked if any of us could attend. I have a meeting in Barnstable earlier today, I'm not sure if I'll get back in time.
I've got it on my schedule.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I'm back when I'm out of town.
I'm in New Hampshire.
That sounds warm.
Cold.
And I-
Everybody's got snow.
It'll be pretty. And that's all I have. So we'll move on to discussion of future agenda items. I know last meeting, I think it was last meeting, we talked about having an update on Black Beach, and we are gonna have that on the 30th. So are there any other future agenda items we'd like to see?
I had asked him if we could get the town council in here to clarify the declaration of-
Conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest, disparity between, you know, what's required and what, what's the go-to.
Go ahead.
So we talked, we did talk about that when I met with the chair and vice chair on planning the future agendas, and what we would like to do is take that up in a Saturday, at a Saturday workshop meeting as part of a conflict of interest training. The chair had asked that the town council present a couple of different training items for the board on conflict of interest, some charter issues and-
Committees.
Open meeting law committees, yep. So if it's agreeable, we would plan to take it up. I think tentatively planned for March.
That's it.
Would that include other committee members? Because obviously, conflict of interest law applies to all the committee activities.
Yeah, no, this would be actually a workshop meeting, I believe it's not open to the public. It's a training for the Select Board, not open to the public.
It's more about liaison to committees and-
Yeah.
-Select Board roles, as opposed to, I think, what you're thinking, which could be another training with all the committees.
We have, you're absolutely right, Mr. Patterson, that we have had trainings that are open to all committee members on conflict of interest law and, and public records law, but this is something different.
Okay. My policy list is growing, so I'd still like to do that policy discussion, whether it's on a Saturday or a regular meeting, maybe we come in a little early one night. I was curious to see that Martin Luther King Day, we didn't have the flags up on Main Street, and I know that that's a volunteer veterans group that puts the flags up, but it occurred to me that we probably should have some sort of policy of what the dates are, you know, we can try to meet it, if we can, we can't, but we should be consistent, and we'd put them up in East Falmouth.
Saw you back, somebody that I knew saw you with him in the back of your truck.
Yep.
Thank you.
And thanks to Zach Grace for helping me with it this time, and he's offered to take over, because he's right there, right next to where the flags are, and I'm living in North Falmouth now, so I'm so appreciative of having a young man come along and help me.
Sir, back, Peter, do you have a date for that March Saturday workshop?
No.
We haven't nailed down a date, but we, we need to do that.
Yeah, please, because my schedule's busy.
And that's gonna help us on, when we have presentations, on how we can interpret what we approve and what we don't.
Yeah, that's the plan.
Right?
Right. So how about, I know Nancy returns on the 30th, so perhaps the first meeting in February, we can talk about dates.
Okay.
Okay. Any final thoughts?
Just if I could follow up with Mr. Brown, if you have a list of policies that you want us to address that you wanna shoot my way, that would be great.
Any final thoughts?
Just if I could follow up with Mr. Brown, if you have a list of policies that you want us to address that you want to shoot my way, that would be great.
Okay.
I know, I know you've mentioned some of them that are on my radar, but I just want to make sure I have all of them.
I won't let you read this.
The last time we talked about policies, many moons ago, we discussed the need to go through and just do some language changing on the policies before actually getting to the substance of them, and so depending on which policies we think are the most pressing, we may need to do that first.
Well, I'm talking about new policies that I have here, and the last time our policy discussion didn't go well, we kind of got bogged down with old stuff that hadn't even been figured out, so I don't want to do that again.
But maybe that's why language in some of the other ones may help you going forward with other ones that overlap.
Yeah.
Possibly, hopefully.
And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second. Second to first.
So who motion? Motion, second?
Sure.
Motion, second.
Motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.